Okay, well, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Town Council meeting. If you'll please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Mayor, before we move along the agenda, I do have a couple of amendments to the agenda I'd like to propose. After the presentation from CCHD, I'd like to move Item 8A under Old Business. Discussion Possible Action Shared Services with Matt Hart, Executive Director of CRCOG. And then, following that, we would move Item 12A, the Executive Session. Discussion concerning the performance and evaluation of the Town Manager. After that, we revert back to the rest of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, let's move on to public comment. This portion of the meeting is specifically set aside for comments from the public, who are asked to limit their comments to two minutes. Any person interested in providing public comment via email should email publicmeetings@rockyhillct.gov prior to 4:00 PM on the day of the meeting to have their public comment read into the record. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard? Okay, come on up and just state your name and your address and then... Not your social, no, we don't need it. But do know that we can't answer questions and we don't...
I know, I've done this before.
Great, thank you.
I'd like to, this evening, I'd like to ask you to consider a process that will increase the safety of our people, of our property, of our pets, in the use of pyrotechnics.
We didn't get a name and address, I don't believe.
Excuse me?
Did we?
Did you say your name and address?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot. I'm a senior. John Taylor, 20 Countryside Drive, Rocky Hill, Connecticut.
Okay.
Okay. And as I said, it's all about safety and safety for the use of pyrotechnics. I have a good example to explain to you that is very near and dear to my heart. At the same time, I think a permit process will also keep Rocky Hill as a town in a safety zone when it comes to lawsuits, whatever, responsibility. And it's a simple permit process. It's just a review and, of course, there's a fee. A review of, are you going to use pyrotechnics? Where did you buy them? What are they? To describe it perfectly, you know, the numbers, I've never bought them, so I don't know. But I know there's some complication there, from firecrackers to explosive grade. And I want to tell you about an experience I've had with a neighbor using explosive-grade pyrotechnics. And, well, anyway, I think the process could be a simple one. It could happen like that. And at the bottom of this process, in other words, what is this all about? When do you plan to use them? Where do you live? At the bottom, asking some people in the neighborhood, would this bother you? Because we have some great places to go. Middletown has some really good, always had them, some really good fireworks. Different parts of the state, close to Rocky Hill, has them. I don't understand why people get so complicated with them and use them in a residential area. My example is, I was coming home on a July 4th, played music over my brother-in-law's meeting, another guy playing a guitar, enjoying life, everybody's happy. It's 9:00 o'clock at night and I round, I come around the stop sign to head down on New Road, head towards where we live, and I see a softball-sized explosion. And it looks like it's over my house. But then, it didn't go away. Angela, that's over our house. And then we were going a little faster, there were two cops that had someone pulled over. I said, oh, good, someone's close here. And obviously, with two cops on a dark road, something else was going on that's more important. So I went down the street, came around the corner, got out of the car, and sure enough, there's a party going on next door. Another one went off right over us. And you could hear, they're about the size of, if you ever see a bullet, about the size of like a 9mm 32, that big, with little hooks on it, pulling it, pulling the charges, excuse me, explosive grade. My neighbor said, Johnny, the house hasn't burned down yet, but he's trying. I went, oh, my God. So this is like 9:30, so there must have been a good handful going off. And they were coming directly at my house. Our lots are this way, the woods are here. And it wasn't going this way, it wasn't going, so it was going over my house. I had them on my awning, on the roof, on the street in front of where I live. And I picked them up, first of all, I called the police. And they said they could have someone there in a couple of minutes. I said, great, another one blew up, I said, I can't wait. I went, I asked them nicely, I went over and I said, can you stop, Victor? Can you please stop? And they were laughing full around as a party. Told me, keep quiet. I was like a fifth grader, no, keep quiet, no. You know? And then I came back around and said to my wife, I've got to go over there. And I went on the patio first, I'm yelling, Victor, cut it out, stop. Didn't stop. So I rounded the front, went into the side of his house, and I'm yelling at him, Victor, stop, stop. He came running around his, it looks like Fort Ticonderoga, where he has a pool there. He came around and he's yelling at me. And he had that look on his face like the Fruit Juicy Hawaiian Punch guy, you know? And he's running at me. And he stopped, he said, get out of my yard. I said, yeah, I'll get out of your yard, but I want you to stop these, please stop these pyrotechnic, no, stop these fireworks. He said, if you want fireworks, I can bring you fireworks. And I turned around, I said, okay. And I turned around like this, and he grabbed me. And from all those great Maga, not Maga, what is it? The Israeli...
Mossad.
What's it called? The Israeli...
Mossad.
Mossad.
Huh, huh, what's that?
Mossad.
No, there's, it's... I looked at him, I'm like, see, this is what happens in your my age, it goes away really quickly. It comes back. It's a martial art. Krav Maga, Krav Maga. And you see those things, and I practice them every day. I'm old and I can't run away as much as I used to when I was younger. And it worked, it took about three seconds and he stopped. And it was it. I went home, called the police. My point is this, of course, the next day, I came into the police station and I brought some of the examples of what was blowing up and how it was being pulled by these little charges over my house. Now, if we had a process in place, that wouldn't have happened because these were clearly explosive-grade. And I think that it brings a lot of safety to the community, but also to the town and its responsibilities. And it saves a lot of problems with neighbors. And it just doesn't, it's not in the right place. What if you had your grandchildren there that they were yelling, screaming, whatever it is? It's, some people like them, some people don't. So it's up to them. I don't think I'm being unpatriotic because there's a lot of other ways that people are unpatriotic, like a certain person, when he was the 45th President, said, these people that have died here in Normandy, he referred to them as suckers, and it's been documented. I went, when the real patriots, John Parker, look this up, and I'll leave. John Parker, Lexington, 1775. There were 80 of his people there, of the militia, and there were 300 redcoats going to Lexington. Their objective was to get a cache of weapons and also to arrest some insurrectionists. And they had their 80 people there. And he said, don't fire unless fired upon. But if they mean to have war, let it start here. I mean, these are men that put their lives on the line for us. That's unpatriotic. I think the things that happen with police, with firemen, with you doing this job, this is patriotism right here. And so people have said to me, John, you can't do that. I said, I like to talk to the council, you can't do that, John, because you're going to be looked at as being unpatriotic. It's patriotic to have fireworks. I said, well, there's a couple of places in the world today, why don't you go help out there? You'll get all the fireworks you can. I want to thank you for being here and for allowing us to do what we do.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Okay, anyone else wishes to be heard? All righty, then we're going to move on to our presentation. We have a special presentation this evening for the Central Connecticut Health District Walking Competition Champion, Pradeep Ankaraju. Woo-hoo! Come on up. Pradeep has logged. First of all, he's always our amazing champion for our Central Connecticut Health District. And again, this year, an amazing champion, logging over 1 million steps during the Central Connecticut Health District Annual Walk this May for Town Walking Challenge. And so, we have a special presentation for you from the Central Connecticut Health District. And I'm going to come up there. You're welcome. So, on behalf of the Central Connecticut Health District, we want to congratulate you for your 1 million steps. And they have created this special presentation for you, but better than that, something that you can wear, a special pin, and acknowledging all that you have done. And we so appreciate you participating in that walk. And we're so, so very impressed by all those steps that you took. So God bless and congratulations.
Thank you.
Did you want to say anything? What inspired you or is this just naturally you walking a million steps?
Well, it's been, I think this is the third time. This time, it's my pleasure to be extended for the Rocky Hill firefighter, too. So I'm a volunteer firefighter. Yeah, it's fun.
Well, we appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Congratulations.
How many steps in a second, please? 800,000?
Okay, so let's move on to Old Business. A, Discussion Possible Action Shared Services, Matt Hart, Executive Director from CROG. Welcome, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Should I sit up, up here?
Yeah, go ahead.
Great.
Okay, then am I going to be able to use this screen here?
Yeah.
We have it here.
Yep, there you go.
There we go, excellent. Well, thank you all so much for having me. I want to thank the mayor, Mr. Carpentino, and Ms. McKim for inviting me today. Matt Hart, the Executive Director at the Capital Region Council of Governments. And we serve the town of Rocky Hill and 37 other municipalities in the greater Hartford region. One of the areas in which we work is municipal services. And in that department, we promote shared services for our towns. And we've been doing a lot of work in this space for many years now. And Mr. Carpentino and Ms. McKim asked me to come in, talk a little bit about shared services as a concept, some potential applications, and then some ways to get started and some potential resources that are available. I did have a chance to listen to your discussion at your last meeting, which was certainly helpful and informative for me. I will say, I've got a fair amount of experience with shared services. I spent most of my career working as a Town Manager. Most recently, with the town of West Hartford. And then, prior to that, the town of Mansfield, out in eastern Connecticut. Both communities do provide a number of their services through a shared services model, which I can touch on over the course of my presentation. Shall I use this? Yeah, great. All right, so let's begin by talking about common models. And yes, Ray was very kind to provide hard copies of my presentation for you at your places. And I'll pause periodically for questions. So, shared services, as you may know, it's a very broad and scalable concept. So what do I mean by that? It can be used in both small communities and large. It's not just something for small towns, which many, many think it is. And it's applicable for both administrative and support services, like finance or human resources, information technology, facilities management, as well as more community-based services, like animal control and building inspection. Some common examples, often what you see is a municipal government providing shared services with its own local or regional school district. And there are half a dozen or so municipalities in our state that do a pretty decent job with this. And I've highlighted three here within the CROG region. So the town of Mansfield, where I worked for several years, they've got a shared finance department between the town and the Mansfield Public Schools. Also serves the regional school district, as well as the regional health district and other entities. So the finance director there doubles as the school business manager and reports to both the Town Manager and the Superintendent of Schools. Mansfield also has a shared Department of Information Technology and a shared Department of Facilities Management, where the director of those departments has two, they report to two, sometimes three people, the Town Manager and the Superintendent of Schools. Plainville, pretty extensive in this area as well. Finance, human resources, information technology, I believe, facilities management as well. West Hartford shares facility maintenance, facility management services between the town and the public schools. They have one IT department. They used to share human resources, not quite as much anymore. So those are a couple of examples of towns in the capital region that are sharing services between the town government and the local school district. And then you will also see two or more municipalities sharing services. This is more common, more common, not exclusively, but more common in our small to mid-sized communities in our state. So a couple of examples, I would highlight, there are four towns in the eastern portion of our region. Bolton, Andover, Wellington, and then Ashford, which is just outside of our region. They share a regional building inspection program, and it's headed by the town of Bolton. They just added a fifth member with the small town of Marlborough, also in the eastern portion of our region. So they are all handling their building inspection duties collectively. Another example I would highlight, and this has been in place for decades, is the towns of Windsor and Bloomfield share a landfill. One of the state's few remaining active landfills and transfer station. And they've done that successfully for a good long time. And then, a third model that I would point to is shared services through a council of governments or a RESC, that's the school equivalent of a COG. That's a regional services entity that supports school districts. And there are several around the state as well. The northeastern Connecticut Council of Governments provides a regional animal control program. And the employees are employees of the COG, employees of the COG, and they provide animal control services to their membered communities. Another example, and this is relatively new for CROG, we are managing a shared trail maintenance equipment program. There are roughly half a dozen towns participating in that, as well as riverfront recapture. We obtained a state grant to purchase the equipment, and now we are overseeing the use of that resource. And then a third example I would highlight, and this is in place on the education side, is East Con, out in eastern Connecticut, for many, many years, has managed a regional health insurance pool that includes both municipalities, as well as school districts. So those are some common models that you see here in our region and around the state. So let's talk a little bit about the benefits of shared services. So usually, when the parties are contemplating a shared services arrangement, they're thinking about providing services more efficiently, right? More efficiently and effectively. And oftentimes, a primary goal is to save money, right? To save taxpayer dollars and other resources. So that's usually a driving, driving factor. I will say that it doesn't work really well when you're contemplating, when you're doing it for the purposes of layoffs or reduction in force, it can backfire. It can backfire, and I'm happy to elaborate on that if needed. Another real benefit of the model, and I don't think this is talked about enough, is that it can allow you to enhance or improve services, especially for smaller communities that may not be in a position to hire a specialist on their own. I think back to my service in the town of Mansfield. We were members of a 10-town regional health district, served 10 communities. And the services we were able to obtain from the regional district, it would have been much more expensive for us to try to finance that with, on our own, if we had just employed our own staff. So you really have the opportunity to improve or enhance services under this model as well. It can help you avoid the cost of redundant software systems or facilities. Think about a town in a school district, right? And all the things they have in common from a back-office perspective, finance, HR, IT. Now, chances are, you probably are already utilizing the same software. But if you're not, it provides you with an opportunity to do so and to share facilities as well. Couple of other benefits I would highlight here, increased opportunities for cross-training and succession planning. So let's say a couple of communities are sharing building inspectors or fire marshals, right? It gives them more of an opportunity to cross-train their personnel so that they're more well-rounded and able to fill in for the coworkers when they're not available. And then succession planning, I think we all have a sense of how challenging it is to recruit and retain municipal employees. And where is that next generation of talent going to come from? When you have a shared services model, it gives you more of an opportunity to develop people, to develop people and see them promoted over time. And then lastly, I would not short-change this. With a shared services model, it gives you a true opportunity to improve and strengthen key relationships. Key relationships. You know, for example, where a town and a school district are sharing services, the Town Manager and the Superintendent of Schools are going to be working more closely together. And that can have real benefits when you're talking about balancing a budget or planning a big capital project, like a school renovation or even a new school in the future. So building those relationships has real benefits over time. So I've got a couple more slides to work through, then I'd be happy to take your questions and comments. Some relevant legislation, I'm not going to read these word for word, but some excerpts here. First, this Connecticut General Statute, Section 7-148 CC. This is the statute that permits intergovernmental agreements. That allows towns to come together through the purposes and to execute an agreement to share services. It's like an MOU, it's like a contract. So this is the statute that permits that. This statute, 8-31B subsection B, this allows regional councils of governments to do essentially the same thing, so that you can provide shared services through a council of governments as well. And the last one I wanted to highlight for you, hasn't been codified in statute yet. It was passed as part of the Bond Bill in 2024, Section 127B. This was to get at a situation, some towns, when they were trying to engage in shared services, they ran into impediments in their local charters. For example, your charter might specify that the town establishes a certain position, like a Director of Finance or a Town Clerk, et cetera. This law is designed to clarify that those charter provisions do not limit your ability to share those services. And that this state law would supersede any provision of any local charter or ordinance that would interfere with that. So this was passed just last year. So that's some relevant legislation to bring to your attention. I want to talk about a state grant that can help you get started. And this state grant's been around for about a decade now. It's called the Regional Performance Incentive Program, or the RPIP. And only councils of governments and the regional education service centers, the RESCs, are eligible to apply. And we do so on behalf of our members. So this grant provides startup funds, normally for a three-year period, that would support a new regional service or program. It's got to involve at least two entities, needs to involve at least two towns or a town and a Board of Education, or a couple of school districts, or a COG and some number of municipalities. In the project criteria, it needs to provide a service that is going to promote efficiency, reduce costs, improve service levels. Secondly, the application needs to demonstrate the potential to benefit all of the COG or RESC members, even if they're not initial participants in the application. Third, that it's going to promote regional cooperation and reduce social inequality. Must be approved by the majority of the COG or RESC board. And the applicant must inform potentially impacted bargaining units at the local level. So at CROG, we help our towns put together good competitive applications under this program. And right now, we're working with the city of Hartford and the town of East Hartford on a couple of initiatives. We're working out in the eastern portion of our region with Talon and Wellington and some others that are looking at establishing a regional animal control program. We did receive a grant relatively recently to enable the town of Marlborough to join that four, now five-town regional building inspection program. So we work with our towns to help them put together good quality applications that we think are going to be competitive and score well at the state level. So if you are looking to share a new service or an existing service with your school district or a couple of your neighbors, really would encourage you to come to us with the idea. And we can see if we can obtain one of these state grants to help you get it started. And normally, the way the startup funds work is that they de-escalate over time. And normally, the way the startup funds work is that they de-escalate over time. So for example, a very common model, look at a three-year grant, in the first year, the state's going to subsidize 75% of the cost. In year two, they'll subsidize 50. In year three, 25%. In year four, the parties need to fund the new service or program in its entirety. So it's really to help subsidize a new venture. It's been pretty popular around the state. So what are some keys to success to shared services? You know, based on my experience and the experience of others at CROG, as well as leaders from around the capital region? So we did hold a very popular workshop on this last year, where we featured a number of our towns that are doing good work in this space. So number one, any type of arrangement like this, it's going to be important to have a good governance model in place and good, strong lines of communication. And you've got to be willing to collaborate, you've got to be willing to collaborate. You've got to hire the right people who can, and I'm quoting one of my colleagues with this statement, who can check their ego at the door. You know, people who are willing to work collaboratively, people who would be a department head, for example, who would be willing to report to two chief executive officers, not just one, right? Maybe reporting to both the town manager and a superintendent of schools. Secondly, I think it's very, very important to negotiate a good, strong agreement, an inter-local agreement, or an MOU, or another document that's going to specify how the agencies, the partners are going to fund, manage, and provide the shared service. You want to have that in writing because people are going to come and go, and you're going to need that record. You're going to need that record over time, and you should periodically update it. So in Mansfield, we used to update these on a three-to-five-year cycle. We had an agreement between the town and the school districts for all the services we provided. Number third, consult with your bargaining units towards the front end. So the unions are often viewed as a bit of the boogeyman in this, right? Oh, we can't do this, the unions will never support it, they'll never agree to it. Don't start there, don't start there. Bring them in, bring them in on the front end. Talk about what your intentions are, what you would like to accomplish, and allow them to work with you, to work with you. And utilize the management rights clause that you have in your collective bargaining agreements, use that judiciously, and be prepared to negotiate the impact if you need to do that. And then lastly, it's important to convene regular meetings between the principals and elected bodies. For example, if you're sharing building inspection services with a couple of neighboring towns, the town managers and the town managers and the chief building officials should sit down periodically. How's it going? How's it working? Is anybody getting short-changed? What might we need to modify under this approach here? Do the same thing with your elected bodies. You know, provide periodic updates to the town council, Board of Education, whomever. Ideally, bring the bodies together and celebrate your successes. So, how do you get started? And I know you've been talking about this for a little while now. You can consult with your COG, your RESC, or the Office of Policy and Management, OPM, which administers this RPIP grant. As I talked about already, do your best to leverage the RPIP program, as well as any other relevant state grants that are out there. You can start small or with a pilot, you know, to build some success. For example, maybe there's a position, like a payroll administrator, for example, or a network administrator, a position that you could share with your school district or with a neighboring town. Or maybe there's a piece of equipment that you could look to share with some of your neighboring towns. So you can start small and build on it over time. And particularly, if you're looking to share services with another municipality, find a partner that you can trust. You know, someone who maybe is similar to you in terms of size and needs, someone you can trust and be flexible, patient, and you've got to be willing to take some risk. Got to be willing to take some risk at the chief executive officer level, as well as at the elected level. So we do have a toolkit on our webpage, you can access it here, you can access it here. One more recommendation, I want to leave with you before I take your questions and comments. If you're serious about the topic, and it seems like you are, I would suggest that you appoint an ad hoc committee, you know, focused on shared services. And that can be an ad hoc committee of council members, maybe you can bring in some Board of Ed members, and staffed by whoever the town manager designates. So that's my quick overview, Mayor. Happy to take any questions that you and others may have.
Thank you so much, it was super informative, and we appreciate it, because you're right, we have been discussing this a little bit off and on more lately, and especially with Ray and Mona attending some of those shared services meetings. And it is something that we would like to explore. We're also looking at exploring some internal efficiencies as well, and potentially hiring an entity to take a look at how we're running things, both on the town side and the Board of Education side, and are there ways that we can be a little bit more efficient? Or, you know, just improve things? Maybe we need more people, maybe we don't, right? But in terms of the regional sharing of services, I think this is super important as a conversation because there are a lot of different services that we provide that, and the one that comes to mind is the one in the, for the hearing officers, for the hearings that we have, right? The Fair Rent Commission. Because, you know, that's a commission of volunteers, right? And as we've seen, sometimes we have attorneys that are involved, and it's if you don't know the law, right? And even if you do know the law, you probably shouldn't be sitting there in that capacity. So we have to hire an attorney to be there, and this is a super expensive endeavor for the community. So if that's a potential area where we may be able to share a service. So I love the idea of exploring this, and so I'm going to open it up to you guys.
Can I raise a couple of questions?
Yeah, please.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you for that presentation. Does CROG have any systematic way to assist towns with matchmaking, so to speak? So I'll give you an example. So let's say a town has a part-time animal control officer, and that person is about to retire, and the town's saying, well, you know, rather than try to find another part-timer, maybe there's some other town that has excess capacity in that regard that we could share with. But then the question is, okay, how do we find out who has that capacity? Do you have any kind of like clearinghouse for information on that? Who has surplus? Who has a need in terms of staff and equipment?
We can assist with that. The way we often approach it is we'll convene meetings of neighboring municipalities to talk about opportunities. For example, you know, if here in Rocky Hill, you could sit down with a couple of your adjoining municipalities, we would be happy to sit in and help facilitate the conversation to look at both current as well as future needs, and see if there's any interest in exploring an RPIP grant, or even sharing a position based on a key retirement or vacancy. And then we also have something of a sense, it's not all entirely documented, but something of a sense of what a particular town's needs are.
Is that something you've considered, just having something more systematic? Because it sounds like what you're describing is rather ad hoc, a town has a need and maybe contact somebody, try to, you know, arrange something, but...
Right.
Is it something you've considered to maybe have something, as I said, more systematic, that information is routinely being exchanged, or surplus capacity that you can share or need, you know, that a town has that's interested in, you know, getting connected somehow? Is that something that you've looked into, or that you may have the capacity to do?
There are two ideas on the table. So one is that we maintain a bit of a spreadsheet, if you will, of opportunities, towns that might have some excess capacity, that they could potentially provide services to a neighbor or to another municipality. And then secondly, something we're discussing at the committee level is what we call systems mapping. So let's take a look at a service, like building inspection, for example, and how is it provided across the region? How is it provided across the region? You know, what towns, how they're resourced? Where they have some excess capacity, as well as communities that are really struggling to meet their current workload? To see if we can capture some economies of scale through that process.
Okay, so that's under discussion?
Yes.
Okay. And my second question is, can you give some specific examples of what type of expenses these grants will actually pay for?
So they will generally cover the cost of staff, staff to provide the services, related equipment, training, et cetera. On the facility side, there tends to be more programmatic in terms of expenses, as opposed to covering for the cost of a facility. So certainly for the staffing and related equipment.
So let me circle back to my example of the retiring part-time animal control officer. So our person's about to retire, and so we can hire another part-timer, and the town can spend its own money to pay for that person. But they think, no, wait, let's go through CROG and see if we can share with a neighboring town, okay? In that scenario, what might CROG pay for or help us get a grant for? Instead of us having a right to pay our own part-time person, we want to share with somebody else, does that mean CROG will now pay our town a share of that shared person, that person's salary? Or, you know, what type of expenses are we talking about here that might be reimbursed?
So hypothetically, what we would do in that scenario is we would put out a survey and see if there are other towns that are interested in either sharing a position with Rocky Hill, or maybe they've got excess capacity that they could sell to Rocky Hill. So we would do that type of survey. And you may also run into a situation where there are towns and other towns in a similar situation. All right, is there an opportunity to create a shared or a regional animal control program? In that case, we would look to put together a competitive application to that RPIP program. And we do all this grant assistance work at no additional cost to our members. That's covered by our existing budget and revenues that we receive. We have staff dedicated to supporting that RPIP program.
So going back to my question about what you might pay for, though, so let's say that through that process, Rocky Hill then enters into a contract with Weathersfield or whatever, that we're going to buy 15 hours per week of that person's time, okay? CROG might pay for that?
No.
Okay, so what does...
No. So CROG is not paying, CROG is not paying.
It's just with the grant, I understand.
Yeah, the state pays through the RPIP. The state is only going to pay for a new program, a new regional program or initiative, or initiative. So let's say a neighboring town wants to, can provide the service to Rocky Hill, and that neighboring town is going to need to hire some additional staff to do that. That additional staff could be, the cost of that staffing could be covered by the RPIP grant over a period of years.
So it'd have to be a new person?
Correct.
So not buying into existing surplus capacity, it would be if there was a new hire?
Correct.
Or new equipment, something new?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Sure.
Hi, Matt, thanks for coming today. Quick question about combination of services between the town and Board of Education, because we've had some preliminary discussions, and I think the discussion was mostly around IT initially. And what we were hearing was, well, there's some very special needs that Board of Ed has on the IT side that, and because of security and confidentiality, can't cross with the town. Have you come across these types of challenges in other instances, and if so, how have you kind of combated them?
Yes, yes. So that's reminiscent of some conversations I've had in the past. With respect to IT specifically, I recall an issue where certified school personnel could only be supervised by certified personnel. So the way we worked around that was we made sure that the director of IT was certified, was certified at, I think, an assistant superintendent level or something along those lines. But you're going to encounter that, but I encourage you to push a little bit, you know? Okay, let's sit down and talk about what's really required here. What are the challenges, but then more importantly, how do we overcome them? How do we overcome them? But the other party's really got to be willing to engage with you and collaborate.
So is that where your organization would kind of come in and help facilitate a discussion?
We can help with that, yes.
Hey, we've seen this in this other instances here, is how we've kind of tried to solve that, would that be something looking?
And we're doing that right now in our work with the City of Hartford and East Hartford. Is there's, and really want to commend the two mayors there, there was initially, as I understand it, you know, some opposition and concern at the department head level, but they're working through it. They're working through it, they're being consistent, they're being persistent, and starting to make some progress.
Great.
Yeah, I just want to echo what Jeff was saying, because that's, over the years, that's been a big constraint when we're talking to directors about their thoughts on consolidation or working together with, between the Board of Ed and the town or the municipal side. And there's always been this reluctance, but I think you bring up a valid point, that we just have to bring them together with probably your help to further those discussions. I just wanted to get your take on a couple of things. One, do you have examples of situations where you saw a percentage in savings because of this work effort, these consolidations?
Yeah, it's a good question. So I don't have any hard statistics at my fingertips.
Okay.
So, but a couple of anecdotes I could provide. Shared IT between the Town of Mansfield, the Mansfield Board of Ed, and Regional School District 19. And we accomplished this about 10 years ago, a decade ago. So at that time, we were paying the director probably 125 to 150, or somewhere in that range. Instead of having three, instead of paying three directors at that level, we were paying one. And that savings allowed us to hire more specialists, more specialists who could support that entity. So the savings are not always one-for-one, I will caution that. For example, if you replace, if you consolidate directors, especially across multiple organizations, chances are you're going to need a deputy or assistants. So you got to take that into your calculation as well. But yes, you can save some significant money here in doing this, especially on a larger scale.
When we talk about consolidation, working with fellow municipalities, especially our neighbors, what comes to mind for me is, I was part of discussions 30 years ago about a tri-town paramedic service between Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, and Newington, because right now, we have Aetna helping us with paramedic service, Aetna helps Weathersfield, and AMR helps Newington. And it's, again, we're in these siloed situations. And so 30 years ago, we were talking about an independent tri-town paramedic service that would be run centrally to cover all three towns. Have you been involved in any discussions with other towns that see a consolidation of like EMS services?
We've had some preliminary conversations, yes. And that's one of the disciplines where we'd like to do that, systems mapping, particularly on the EMS side, because we know that it's a real challenge to recruit and retain staff, right? At both the BLS, basic life support, and ALS paramedic level. So that's one of the areas where we want to look at the needs and the services across the region. And I believe the state... And I believe the state has a strategic planning initiative underway, too. They're still at the beginning stages where they're looking at that issue. And on the fire side, on the fire side, the vast majority of Connecticut towns are still reliant on volunteer fire departments, who've done a fabulous job for our communities for centuries now. But that model is very stressed as well, is very stressed, especially for daytime coverage. And we're seeing more and more communities hiring career firefighters or even part-time firefighters to cover those busy daytime hours and shifts. But on the EMS side, I do see us taking a critical look at that in the coming year.
Right, because, you know, the advantage of, especially on the EMS side, is that they bill, so there's revenue.
Yes.
So if it was central, I mean, if it was regionalized between the tri-town area, the three of us, then the revenue would be coming in times three to pay for the staffing and infrastructure of the EMS system. I'm not talking about replacing Rocky Hill volunteers or Newington volunteers, because there's a lot of history there, there's a lot of dedication and pride. This is the paramedic level that we pay. Rocky Hill pays hundreds of thousands of dollars a year for just Rocky Hill paying Aetna. And I'm not sure what Weathersfield or Newington pays, but there could be some substantial savings in something like that where it's regionalized.
Yeah.
But, thanks, Matt, this was really, really good.
Thank you, Counselor.
Would that be the type of thing that you might be able to get a grant for, if you did create something?
Oh, certainly. Yeah, that would be a good, I think a good, strong RPIP application.
I, do you want to go?
No, no, go ahead.
Again, thank you for your time coming out tonight, Matt. You know, one of the things that you said in the presentation was you don't want this to be, or you hope it's not, a reduction in force, right? But you talked about, you know, three towns coming together and making one position and maybe have to make it a deputy, but I don't know how you get away from reduction in force in that way, unless you just happen to have the moon and stars aligned, that two people retired and we can use that one person left. So when you come across and you try to put these, you know, entities together, how are you, how can you not avoid a reduction in force? Again, unless you're lucky.
Yeah, great question, and I'm glad you asked me. So what I mean by that point is if your goal, if your goal is to use the shared services model primarily for a reduction in force or large-scale layoffs, I think you're going to run into more bumps in the road on the collective bargaining side. Again, if you're consolidating at the executive level, they're going to need more support. Generally, when you're entering into a shared services agreement, most of your savings from a staffing perspective are going to be at that executive level, at that executive level. In terms of the folks who are performing the frontline work, the frontline work, you know, you may still need close to the same number
Right.
that you have at present. You may also save in terms of the middle management side, but not always, because, again, when you're consolidating at the senior level, you're going to need assistants and deputies to support them.
Well, to your point, I mean, hopefully, we've run lean to that point.
Yeah.
So to your point, I don't think we have excess, you know, at the lower level or even maybe middle management. So then, what comes to mind is, is how many of these shared services agreements can you really have? Because, you know, we may be a good partner with Cromwell or Weathersfield or whatever for these things, but we may be a better partner for something else with Manchester. I don't, doesn't matter who the town is, but can you have more than one shared services agreement, or are you just asking for trouble by doing that? Sorry, Mona.
Oh, you could certainly have more than one, but again, you need partners that you can trust, that you can trust and rely on. And, you know, have a similar set of interests. For administrative services, back office services, I really encourage towns to look to their own school district first. Look there first.
I was going to say, by definition, you know, you wouldn't have a troika of like a Board of Ed and then two towns, right? That's not going to make, only us and the Rocky Hill Board of Ed would be a match, if we're going cross-entity, so to speak.
Yeah, I have seen, I talked about the Mansfield experience, where we had three partners. We had the town, the pre-K through eight school district, and the regional high school. And that arrangement worked out pretty well for back office services, for finance, IT, facilities management.
Well, as town manager with the West Hartford and Mansfield, you know, I think John asked the question, have you seen the actual savings when you entered into these services? And I know CROG may not have the data, but you, in your experience, I mean, you did it with a goal.
Right.
The goal had to be what you stated in your presentation. Did you accomplish it?
Yes. And we were able to improve services. That was a primary goal, too, especially that IT example I would point to. We were a bit vulnerable, the three main partners. And by coming together, sharing one director, we were able to add some other very talented staff that helped put us in a more secure position.
Great, again, thank you for your time.
Sure.
I have a quick question. So as the expert.
What do you think should be our next steps, if you had to lay them out?
So what I would suggest is put together an ad hoc committee, you know, give it a charge, give it a charge with a timeline, and it could be comprised of council members, you know, you could invite the Board of Ed to participate, and then look to Mr. Carpenter in terms of who would be the best means to staff it. So that's what I would suggest, is putting together an ad hoc committee with this as its charge.
Do you have like...
To come back to the council to periodically provide you with reports and updates.
Is there a framework that committee could use, utilize, reuse from somewhere else? Because when you start putting together a committee, like, they should have a mandate, right, or a framework to work with?
Yeah.
So from the next steps perspective, that should go along with that, in my view. Where do they start? Is there a framework? They can borrow, steal, whatever?
Yeah, you know, we would be happy to sit down, you know, with the town manager and talk about a suggested approach, where we could fit in, in terms of serving as an advisor. Our toolkit also has a number of model agreements on it, as well as examples of services that are being shared by member towns, both currently and in the past.
Do Superintendent of School, I said on one of those, like, kind of steering committees or like, do you have any, like, again, like, maybe it's in there, it's all in there, I haven't looked at the toolkit, but who, so definitely the members of the Town Council, Board of Ed, I get that, but then, do we need anybody from the administration itself in addition to the town manager, obviously?
I don't want to get ahead of Ray, but if you're looking at the school district, you certainly would want, I think, members of the administration as well.
Yeah, just trying to create a blueprint from a concrete one, like a little bit more, yeah. So, anything else?
And again, you could also start with just the council, you know, at the very beginning stages, just the council, the town manager, Ms. McKim, you know, small subcommittee looking at this, and maybe that subcommittee frames out a larger charge. That would include a larger group with more of a fleshed-out timeline. That would be another way to proceed to the next step.
Thank you, that's
Sure.
Very useful, thank you.
Do you provide a service like we're talking a little bit about, the town side and the Board of Ed side? Do you provide a service that could overlook the two facilities? Would this be better merged? Is there talent that could be used by both of us, the IT, same thing, and make a recommendation? Should you guys think about doing this? Do you analyze each side and then make some recommendations? Is that something you offer?
We do that in more of an advisory capacity, so we don't perform the full set of services that a consultant would, because we just don't have the bandwidth. You know, we sit down with the parties at the administrative level, we talk things through, we can help point things out, opportunities, et cetera. But, you know, we're not able to walk you through a lean process, for example, if you're familiar with that, or a process improvement-type exercise. You know, if you wanted to engage in that level of detail, you know, I would encourage you to hire a consultant or a facilitator who could assist with that.
Is that something the grant would pay for? Sorry to interrupt.
No, unfortunately, they used to, but they don't anymore. Yeah, the grant program, especially in its early years, was used for a number of studies, and we used it to study a regional animal control shelter that we were able to eventually construct in the Town of South Windsor and has served a number of communities for a couple decades now.
Does it make sense to include on the ad hoc committee a couple of members from surrounding towns?
Yes, if, again, if, look at who you're looking to partner with there.
Yeah, based on the relationships and who are... I'm just, you know, Weathersfield always comes to mind, because we just did a grant with them, you know, through DOT, and we've done through IIJA, and
Right.
We share a lot of common goals, I think. You know, I think if we're going to map things out, we probably should have a couple of other towns buy in and see if they would even be interested in, in the first instance, right, and then get them at the table, just nice.
And we look at subregions, because 38 municipalities, you know, a million people, that's big, especially by Connecticut standards. So is there a group of two, three, four, maybe five towns that are interested in working together and ideally are in close proximity? Not to say that, you know, today with technology, you can't have people working remotely and spanning across the larger region.
I think this is great. Anyone else have any questions? We thank you for your time.
Of course, yeah, thank you so much, and really appreciate your membership at CROG. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay.
Do you want to make a motion for executive session?
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session. This executive session is for discussion concerning the performance and evaluation of the town manager pursuant to Section 1-206A of the Connecticut General Statutes, the town manager and Director of Human Resources, Legal Compliance and Risk Management, and Attorney Duncan.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Let me shut off the microphone.
We can't bring this in, right? I printed, I printed the damn thing.
Okay, I'll make a motion to come back into session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, moving on to appointments and resignations. Hello?
None here as well.
I will say, though, that we do have an opening on the Central Connecticut Health District. So Judy Sartucci is retiring, and I want to thank her for her service, her longtime service. So, thank you, Ms. Sartucci. And we do need to consider, I believe, her appointment ended probably the end of June. So, we need to start considering that. Okay, approval of the minutes. A Town Council Budget Workshop, May 1st, 2025.
Make a motion to approve said minutes.
All in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? One abstention. Town Council Special Meeting, June 30th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes.
All in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? Okay. Subcommittee reports. Finance?
Finance, the meeting was canceled on July, our next meeting, I believe, is August 14th.
Okay, Government Ops?
Government Ops met earlier today. Just a couple of updates real quick. On the transfer station, Phase 1, the pit was closed July 1st. Materials were brought, were to be brought to the transfer station. All went smoothly. Phase 2 is an additional exit lane will be opening soon in that area. And then eventually down the road, rollout units to be more accessible, probably sometime next year. Regards to the town garage, meeting room update, Phil Seer has worked out a plan to get a decent price to bring everything up to fire code. Looked to remove some items by, did remove some items by July 1st. That was completed with no issues. And look to replace the stairway in the garage using in-house labor. So, costs would just be for materials of around $4,000. New stairs will meet code and hope to be completed by this fall. A couple of Board of Education updates. The Stevens HVAC project is going well so far. The existing equipment's been demoed, roughed, mechanical work is done, electrical roughing work is continuing. Outdoor equipment has arrived and been put in place. We're waiting on handlers, air handlers for the gym, as expected, to arrive next week. Anticipate a power shutdown to tie in the breakers for the new equipment within the next couple of weeks. But everything is on target to be completed by August 21st or 22nd, in time for the school year. West Hill Roof Design is about complete already mid-late fall and can begin performing filings for reimbursement and go out to bid. They hope to get pricing by mid-February in order to begin next summer of the project. HVAC components will not be impacted during the roof installation. Yeah, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety?
Yeah, Public Safety met earlier this evening, and we have the presentation up right already. So, from PD perspective, starting there, the calls for service very much in line with what we see year over year. In terms of the big numbers there, like, there was a larceny, like, spike last month. Council even brought it up, and really there, the thing to think about is that those things, like, typically go up in summer. That's what, that was, that's what was reported by PD, like, and we continue monitor that. Like, I don't think it's a long-term trend, so we'll keep a, keep a, keep track of that. The big news probably there from a staffing perspective is the SRO position, which was filled recently and going into, the role will be, like,
Okay, I'll make a motion to come back into session.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, moving on to appointments and resignations. Hello?
Uh. None on this one.
None here as well.
I will say, though, that we do have an opening on the Central Connecticut Health District. So Judy Sartucci is retiring, and I want to thank her for her service, her longtime service. So, thank you, Ms. Sartucci, and we do need to consider, I believe her appointment ended probably the end of June, so we need to start considering that. Okay, approval of the minutes, A, Town Council Budget Workshop, May 1st, 2025.
Make a motion to approve said minutes.
All in favor? Aye. Any abstentions? One abstention. Town Council Special Meeting, June 30th, 2025.
Make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any abstentions? Okay. Subcommittee reports, Finance.
Finance, the meeting was canceled on July, our next meeting, I believe, is August 14th.
Okay, Government Ops.
Government Ops met earlier today, just a couple of updates real quick. On the transfer station, Phase 1, the pit was closed July 1st, materials were brought, were to be brought to the transfer station, all went smoothly. Phase 2 is an additional exit lane, will be opening soon in that area, and then eventually down the road, roll out units to be more accessible, probably sometime next year. Regards to the town garage, meeting room update, Phil Seer has worked on a plan to get a decent price to bring everything up to fire code, looked to remove some items by, did remove some items by July 1st, that was completed with no issues, and looked to replace the stairway in the garage using in-house labor, so costs would just be for materials of around $4,000. New stairs will meet code and hope to be completed by this fall. A couple of Board of Education updates, the Stevens HVAC project is going well so far. The existing equipment's been demoed, roughed, mechanical work is done, electrical roughing work is continuing, outdoor equipment has arrived and been put in place, we're waiting on handlers, air handlers for the gym, as expected, to arrive next week, anticipate a power shutdown to tie in the breakers for the new equipment within the next couple of weeks, but everything is on target to be completed by August 21st or 22nd, in time for the school year. West Hill Roof Design is about complete already mid-late fall and can begin performing filings for reimbursement and go out to bid. They hope to get pricing by mid-February in order to begin next summer of the project. HVAC components will not be impacted during the roof installation. Yeah, that's my report.
Okay, thank you. Public Safety.
Yeah, Public Safety met earlier this evening, and we have the presentation up right already. So, from PD perspective, starting there, the calls for service very much in line with what we see year over year. In terms of the big numbers there, like, there was a larceny, like, spike last month, Council even brought it up, and really there, the thing to think about is that those things, like, typically go up in summer, that's what, that was, that's what was reported by PD, like, and we continue monitor that, like, I don't think it's a long-term trend, so we'll keep track of that. The big news probably there from a staffing perspective is the SRO position, which was filled recently, and going into, the role will be like, you know, the zoomed in August. So, that's, that's the PD. Moving on to the next slide, we have the Fire Department, and from my incidents perspective, the Fire Department was tracking a little bit higher than last year for this period, time period, but according to the chief, like, I think it should, like, more, like, kind of come in aligned with, like, what we have seen year over year. Again, we continue monitor, but seems like an anomaly, and it should be able to, like, flatten out over the, or the, or the rest of the year, hopefully. And then, one quick thing to report on that is the highway reimbursement, which was $142,000 for this fiscal year. So, and that continues to be a hotspot, that I-91 area, but at least we are getting paid for the, for the, for the work the Fire Department is doing out there, pretty much every week, I think. So, moving on to the next slide, for ambulance, again, nothing, you know, out of the ordinary on the ambulance side. One thing to note here is, and I will take the RHVA as well as Aetna combined, like, that's the next slide, but they do present their data separately now, but they do a better job of, like, kind of connecting the dots a lot, a lot better than they used to. And one of the things that, that is coming out of that is, you know, they're able to track their cases better, they are able to, like, report back better, and one of the things that is happening recently is Rocky Hill Volunteer Ambulances having higher proportion of cases, they're taking them up, and it's by design, right? Less cases are going to proportionally, right? Are going to, less cases are going to Aetna, which is, again, by design, like I said. So, that's, that's something to watch out for. I think they are doing some, some planning on, like, some software updates and things like that, which I've talked about before, I think there would be no opportunity in fall probably to look at it at some point, but I think from a, moving on to the next slide, like, I think in terms of, like, Aetna and RHVA working together, I think it's, it's, I think, going pretty well, like, from a, from a data and, like, more information-sharing perspective. I underline that because that had been a problem, like, in the past, and I think, I think we are beginning to see a little bit more of, like, a sink there, right? And so to say, yeah. That's pretty much it, and Aetna had their 80th birthday, so happy birthday to Aetna Ambulance.
Senior Liaison.
We didn't have a meeting, we have a meeting on July 28th.
Okay. Land Acquisition and Farmland Preservation.
No report since our last council meeting, but we do have a meeting tomorrow night, the 22nd, at 6:00 PM, Council Chambers.
Liaison to the State Rep and State Senator.
I did not receive a report from either, just a reminder, I did, I've provided the dates of all of our meetings, so they know to give us information as needed, just we have our meetings, so, thank you.
School Liaison.
No report tonight.
Capital Improvements Committee.
There's anybody here?
Nobody's here for that, but they would not be meeting normally. And Economics Development Subcommittee, generally only if there's a specific request do they meet. So, moving on to Consent Agenda, we have none. Continuing with Old Business, B.
So, with that, ma'am, I'd like to make a motion that we table Item B, Discussion Possible Action, Connecticut Age Well Collaborative.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on to New Business, A, Discussion Possible Action, Municipal Employee Union Independent Local 506 Successor Contract.
This is the contract that was discussed at the last month's executive session. Didn't make it to the Discussion Possible Action at that last meeting on the agenda, so we had to put it on this meeting.
So, I can make a motion to, so with that.
It's technicality.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the Municipal Employees Union Independent Local 506 Successor Contract, as we discussed in our executive session.
Second few weeks ago.
All in favor? Aye. Okay, moving on to a very brief Mayor's Report. I just want to let everyone know that the Italian Festival will be September 6th at Elmeridge Park, and if you would like to be a vendor, there is still opportunity to do that. The festival has a Facebook page called Italia America Annual Festa, and you can go on there and you can get all the information you need to be a vendor. Also, we have something on Public Access TV that talks about all of the new exciting activities and new people who will be participating, if you want to learn a little bit more about that. Speaking of Public Access TV, I just want to give a big shout out to Noli, who is, he has been hosting an Albanian program for quite some time now, he's been really gaining in popularity locally and globally, and we are so proud of his outreach, and he's actually working on something super special for the fall, so stay tuned. The Senior Center featured the Featherweight, and we had actor Imma Aiello from Weathersfield, she played Mama Papilio, and we also had the producer from that movie down at the Senior Center, and it was a really fun afternoon. Our Highway Department, in collaboration with Sustainable Rocky Hill Task Force, had a recycling awareness program event recently, where they talked about recycling and how we reduce and recycle here in Rocky Hill, and I went to a little bit of that, and it seemed very well received, so kudos to them. And then the Congregational Church, I want to thank them for hosting a very wonderful community resource event that was organized by a group called Not Just Us, with lots of vendors who shared resources to support folks in need here in Rocky Hill. And then today I had the pleasure of attending, oh, it was, no, this was not today, but I'll tell you, today, today I had the pleasure of attending the Football Boosters Annual Golf Fundraiser, and I just want to give a shout out to the Booster Club, because they're 18 years in, in the making, and do a lot of good work in raising funding so our kiddos can play football. And then I do want to give my final shout out to MTU Aero, who is located right here in Rocky Hill, they had their 25th anniversary last week, they are expanding for the third time here in Rocky Hill, they provide hundreds of jobs in the aerospace industry, they are part of a number of prominent companies that have located here from Germany, and are really contributing to our local economy as well as Connecticut's economy, so we're super thankful to have them. And that's all. Mr. Town Manager.
Thank you, thank you. Just to comment on MTU, it's amazing how these aerospace and manufacturers of airplane parts and particularly engines, how they, how they form partnerships and work with each other. You know, there can be many, six different partners from just six different countries working on a project, contributing, and then they just form partnerships and hear and let them go, and they just keep forming partnerships whenever they need to. And I just thought it was kind of like a, like a neat analysis, how, how maybe we can do that, you know, with the region, just kind of tie that back to Matt Hart's discussion. Just, I want to comment on the Housing Authority's Small Cities $2 Million Grant Project, they're having a groundbreaking ceremony August 1st, onsite on Willow Street, Willow Road, at 10:30 AM August 1st. They're having what they call the Renovating the Future, transforming, transformation of the Rocky Hill Housing Authority. And just one more comment, I would recommend not taking two Zirtec at the same time, it really dries you out, so, with that, you know, that's my short town managers.
Do you happen to have the date for the DVAs Veterans Farmer Market by any chance?
I believe it's August 4th, it's a weekday.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
Like, 3:00 to 6:00 or something?
Yeah.
So, you guys can check that out on Facebook and support the veterans. Okay, so with that.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everyone.